Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for December 20th, 2016. I have to announce that the East Long Metal Planning Board is recording this for purpose of minutes. LCAD is also recording. I have to ask if anyone else is. If so, please state your name.
Chris Kudrow.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we're gonna jump right in. We have a 6:00 PM appointment, a special permit, Section 6, Aaron Beck, 35 Pleasant Street. If you'd like to come up, and Ty's got something to read in?
I'm waiting for this one second.
Okay.
The Planning Board of East Long Metal will hold a public hearing on December 20th, 2016, at 6 o'clock in the school committee conference room at the high school, 180 Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass., on application for a special permit submitted by Aaron Beck for property located at 35 Pleasant Street to construct a sitting area deck to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Information related to the application is on file with the Planning Board and available for review by the public.
We have a diagram. Okay, would you like to tell us what you'd like to do?
What we would like to do? What's done?
Exactly.
So, it was a little, it was a little garden area. It had some bushes. There's already stairs that were there. We built the deck to connect to the stairs in the house. It doesn't go any further to the road, and it doesn't go any further past our house towards the neighbors.
Little alcove.
Yeah, it's a little alcove. It's small.
So, you're looking this section right in here? This existing house?
Yes. That is correct. Yep, that's it.
It's not significantly more non-conforming than previously, and certainly not detrimental to the neighborhood. I see no problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, it is a public hearing, so we will have to open up to the public. But, I mean, what we have to look at is, is this gonna be more detrimental to the neighborhood as it exists?
If it helps, we've had many people stop by that we don't even know to tell us how nice it looks.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
But, at this time, I would open it up to the public. I would ask if there's anyone to hear to speak for this or against it. If so, please state your name. Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the board. Michael, any thoughts?
I'm assuming the only pre-existing non-conforming issue is the sideline setback that's at 20 feet. Other than that, is there anything else?
Nothing.
Nothing else?
The square footage has a foreign edge, non-encroaching on the front side. So, in essence, the new addition meets all the setbacks as far as the zoning goes for residency.
It's residence A.
Oh, it's residence A. Okay, my mistake. I thought that calls the center of your residence C.
In any case, it's...
In any case, I don't have a problem.
I have no problem.
Ty?
Okay, and we're not talking about this one back here, only this one?
Only that.
Yes.
Yeah, fine. Okay.
Okay, well, at this time, then, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Then I would entertain a motion to approve the Section 6 finding.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on it? I don't think it's any more detrimental. I have actually stopped and seen it. Looks like a great job. It actually enhances the house nicely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
You're all set.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thanks a lot, guys.
That's all set. And, we're actually running early.
Waivers.
How about, yes, we start with a waiver of site plan review, Artifacts Integration LLC, 299 Parker Street?
Request for waiver of site plan review, James and Lauren Florentino, 299 Parker Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Artiflex Integration LLC. Owner of business is 70... Kara... Kara... Help me out here.
I don't know what it is. Harris Koklio and James Ferantino.
Oh, yeah, well, Kara Koklio and James Ferantino, 46 Moore Street. Property district is RA. Allowed use is yes, as a home office. Number of employees, including owner, is and tenant is two. Date of last parking plan is NA. Nonapplicable summary of business operation, commercial property, project developers for energy efficient and renewable improvements utilizing PACE, leading to create impactful energy reduction strategies, implementing advanced connected technologies to further drive property improvements and overall efficiencies in building operation, turnkey project developers. No clients at site, all counseling over the phone or off-site. No commercial vehicles, no product storage. The application is signed and dated December 11th, 2016.
So ultimately...
They both live there.
They both live there. What we're looking at is a home office where they do consulting over the phone.
Right.
There's no product storage, no vehicles or anything.
Right.
I would entertain a motion, then. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, how about we jump right in? Request for waiver of site plan review, New England Orthopedic Surgeons, Inc., 265 Benton Drive.
Okay, request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Benton Professional Partners, Jeff...
Ilya.
Ilya? Okay. 265 Benton Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is New England Orthopedic Surgeons, Inc. Owner of business is New England Orthopedic Surgeons, Inc. Business owner's address is 300 Bernie Ave, Springfield, Mass. Property address is 265 Benton Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. And property district is industrial garden, it's allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Total number of employees, including owner, is 20. Summary of business operation is medical office, treating orthopedic issues. Number of commercial vehicles is zero, amount of product storage is zero. The application has been signed and dated December 13th, 2016.
Juice and a wild zone?
Yep, it's a medical building.
The condo or stone.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Do we wanna do parking plan, or do you wanna jump to signage?
Time's up.
It is almost 10 after.
Signage.
Okay, we're gonna jump ahead to signage right at the moment. Request for signage, Pure Berry, 432 North Main Street. It's the building and directory sign.
'Cause I think you're gonna need more than five minutes.
Well, that's why I was stacking. By the time Ty reads everything, it...
I'll go fast. Business name and address is Pure Berry, 432 North Main Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Business owner's name and address is Frank and Elizabeth Roberts, 7 Fox Run, East Hampton, Mass. Property owner's name and address is Seth and Kathy... I can't read their writing. Wait, they're at 339 Pinewood Drive, Long Metal.
Roberts.
Oh, that's Roberts? Okay, that's Roberts then. Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Nearest intersection is Harkness Ave and North Main Street. Square footage proposed sign is 792 square... 7.92 square feet. It is single face, freestanding, no. Attached to the building, yes. Height above the ground is non-applicable. Projection, if any, is non-applicable. If attached to the building, does the sign project over pedestrian way? Not applicable. Setback from property line is 125 feet. Nearest side yard is 465 feet. Distance atop a sign above vertical wall is 12 feet to the top of Berry Panel. 18 feet overall directory sign. It's illuminated. Proposed sign is permanent. Total number of existing signs is zero. Total square footage of existing signs is not applicable. Total number of proposed and existing signs is one. Total square footage proposed and existing signs is 7.92 square feet. Applicant is Greg Gs, 528 Connecticut Ave, South Windsor, Connecticut. Estimated cost is $100. Sign affidavit is attached, and the application's been signed.
7.92?
It's the directory sign.
Yeah, I did the math on that. And the directory sign was like seven, almost closer to eight, and the main sign was closer to 26. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's well under the 100 square feet.
You know, it's stuck.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
This is the directory. Are we doing one at a time?
Yeah, 'cause here's the other one.
So, as far as the directory sign, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed? I gotta ask a question.
Okay, sign permit application dated December 13th, 2016. Proposed, excuse me, business name and address is Pure Berry, 432 North Main Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Business owner's name and address is Frank and Elizabeth Roberts, 7 Fox Run, East Hampton, Mass. Property owner's name and address is Seth and Kathy Roberts, 339 Pinewood Drive, Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed here. Nearest intersection is Harkness Ave and North Main Street. Square footage proposed sign is 25.95 square feet. It is single face. Freestanding, no. Attached to the building, yes. Height above the ground is non-applicable. Projection, if any, is non-applicable. If attached to the building, does the sign project over pedestrian or vehicle way? Not applicable. Setback from property line is 370 feet. Distance to nearest side yard is 268 feet. Distance atop a sign above vertical wall is 11 feet 10 inches. It is illuminated. It's a permanent sign. Total number of existing signs is zero. Total square footage of existing signs is non-applicable. Total number of proposed and existing signs is one. Total square footage proposed and existing sign is 25.98 square feet. Applicant Greg Gs, 528 Connecticut Ave, South Windsor, Connecticut. The estimated cost is $3,000. Sign affidavit is attached, and the application has been signed.
Okay. Is this individual letters being directly attached onto...
I believe so.
...the face? So, they're not gonna blow out up above and do any tariff at work or anything?
Not that I know of.
Because that we would not be approving at this time?
Wouldn't be more than $3,000.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're close to 6:15, so why don't we do the request for waiver of site plan review, Brian McCarthy, Future Forge, 20 Maple Hurst Ave.
You called him in because you wouldn't approve the request for waiver the last time.
Okay.
George, I think, was the one that...
Yeah, I said, I questioned whether it was manufactured.
And what it was. This is the application.
Oh, yeah, I do recall. The first one I remember.
It was, it was designed and crafting with computer software, small objects with wood plastics, home office with no large space or equipment necessary. Sales conducted online. And you said you wanted to speak with him.
Did he show up?
I don't know. Is he here?
I doubt seeing him. I doubt seeing him.
Well, then, I guess he's here.
So, would you like to continue?
Letter went out on the 8th.
I'd say continue it for one more meeting, and if he doesn't respond, just, you know...
I'm sorry.
If he doesn't respond, we will not take it.
We'll continue it for one more meeting. We'll send him another request to be here.
If he doesn't respond, we'll deny it, or we'll vote on it. Let's put it that way.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, that gives us time for a request for waiver of site plan review and parking plan, Fitness Facility, 45 Baldwin Street. You guys wanna come up?
Oh, 6:15 is what we continued, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Request for waiver of site plan, McMahon Family, nominee, business trust, 10 Captain Scott Road, Harwich, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Power Clean Fitness. Owner of business is Michael... Can you say his last name?
I don't know. We'll go with Michael.
Michael. Mr. Michael.
Zolkowitz, we'll go with that.
Okay.
167 Shaker Road. Property address is 45 Baldwin Street. Property district is industrial. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Number of employees, including owner, is 18. Summary of business is a fitness facility. The application's been signed and dated December 12th, 2016.
There's plenty more for you to read.
Is there really? This is to Robin McDonald, Director of Planning, Zone and Conservation, from Robert Parent, Superintendent of Public Works, regarding 45 Baldwin Street parking lot expansion, stormwater calculations. I review the proposed expansion of the parking lot at 45 Baldwin Street and calculations completed by Innovative Engineering Consulting LLC, received by the Planning Department on December 15th, 2016. All stormwater from the parking lot expansion is, is proposed to be directed to infiltration chambers at the center of the parking lot that will result in no discharge from the parking lot area during the, during the, during the two-year and 10-year storm events and a significant reduction from existing conditions of stormwater discharge Baldwin Street during the 25, 50, and 100-year events. Planning Board approval of a stormwater design is recommended subject to the following conditions. The applicant submits an updated site plan for the record that shows stormwater is to enter infiltration basins through a catch basin frame and grate to be installed over each of the two sets of infiltration chambers. This was confirmed in a discussion with the system designer today. Number two, the applicant submits a post-construction stormwater system operations and maintenance plan in compliance with MAST DEP requirements that identify the party responsible for the system maintenance. Cleaning, inspection, and maintenance requirements frequency for each of these is required. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding the additional information. I have a letter here dated from Daniel O'Brien for Smith Associates Surveyors, Inc., acting as agent for the owner, Gary S. McMahon. Dear members, this letter is written to request a waiver from the requirement in Section 5.65 of the zoning bylaws for a 10-foot landscape buffer along street line. Due to the, due to the seating, sitting, sitting of the proposed parking lot at 45 Baldwin Street, there is no available space for a buffer.
Can I read this? No.
Start at page one.
Why don't you guys take a break? I'll read this, and we'll convene in two hours.
I recuse myself.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just for the record, Michael Caraballo is recusing himself at this time. So, we should probably act on a waiver of the 10-foot buffer first. So, what they're asking for is to waive the requirement for a 10-foot landscape buffer along Baldwin Street. If you remember, along Baldwin Street, all the parking lots go directly through the street. I believe there's only one other building on the entire street that has any landscape area.
All parking lots directly adjacent to...
Exactly.
The asphalt, correct?
I'll make a motion to do that waiver.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the waiver? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Phase one done. As far as Bob Parent was saying, is he was looking for a plan to update, I guess, as he has spoken with you?
Yeah, yeah. So, those two basins, those series of basins, they'll have an open grate on either, either one of them.
Okay.
Except, except in a water. Dan just didn't show it on those plans.
Okay.
So, he'll revise those plans. And I'm pretty sure what he's talking about with the DEP is listed in that 103-page document.
Can I see it? If it's in there, I'll be able to find it pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I've read a lot of these.
Yeah, it looked pretty, I didn't read every, every page of it, but it looked pretty boilerplate.
Well, but there's, there should be. There is an operation and maintenance plan, appendix D.
Yeah.
Okay, which, I don't know where it is. Maintenance here. Which is pretty much, yeah, boilerplate. I think the only thing it may not state is who is responsible for it, because this is a...
Right.
A total boilerplate, cut and paste.
It would be McMahon, exactly, and trust.
Well, I think that the DEP needs to have that in writing.
Yeah.
Okay, because unfortunately, in some other cases, never in yours, people don't follow up with the maintenance plan, and then when you say what you're supposed to do it, they go, where does it say I'm supposed to do it? Okay, so there's always that issue of, is it the owner? Is it the leasing? You know, who is gonna actually do the maintenance? And I think a letter from you to Bob would be sufficient.
It's not in that?
It's not in there, no. There's a beautiful maintenance plan, which is taken directly off of some file somewhere.
Exactly, but there's no...
Which is, which is okay. But it needs to say who's specifically...
The responsible party.
Responsible party.
That's the new ones.
And so, I would, you know, I think that if, I would probably make a motion to approve subject to you sending a letter to the Superintendent of Public Works saying...
It would have to come to us, 'cause it would have to be attached to the plan.
To the plan.
And then, we can give Bob a copy.
Okay.
'Cause we're the only ones with a plan. He doesn't have a plan.
Okay, so it would have to be attached to the plan.
Okay.
To us, you know, saying who is the responsible party, whether it's the owner or the leasing, okay? And that way, there's no question, because...
Someone's accountable.
Someone has to be accountable.
Right. And the plan's gonna be updated?
Yeah, Bob's asking for the plan to be updated, basically to show that...
Just to show the grates.
There's infiltration coming through...
Yeah.
...in this area.
Wow.
So...
Where the catch basins are?
Exactly.
Okay.
Just so that, it basically shows that the parking lot is actually draining down and into that area.
Well, if you looked at the grates, you'd see that.
Yeah, well, that's what I did. Everything's pitched there, everything goes to there. It just doesn't show it.
Didn't draw in the little grate.
Well, you know...
Oh, I got it. It's not an issue.
I take it this is a relocation of these people from where they are now, or is it an expansion?
Relocated.
Relocated, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So...
Must be doing good.
Sorry. George, hold on.
How do we proceed, actually, knowing that another site plan is gonna be submitted?
You can approve it contingent upon receipt of a new plan, since that one is really...
Yeah, this is the whole plan, literally. It just has to show this grate.
But you haven't signed that yet.
And the, the letter saying who's responsible.
Yeah.
So, I'm making a motion to approve subject to receiving the revised plan and the letter saying who's gonna be responsible for the maintenance plan.
I will second.
Any further discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks good. I'm glad they expanded.
You got your new plan, and we'll get you the letter.
Okay. Looks good.
You gotta get to work. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, let's put all of this back together.
We just did it.
Yes, we did the landscape buffer. And then, we did the plan.
Yeah, sure. That is a fitness facility. That should be all set.
The only thing that you have is, 6:30, Kim Maisick was coming in. But do you wanna deal with 6:11?
Yeah, let's deal with that.
Right. Today, you, none of you...
Yes.
Probably received what is reported.
No.
It was, it was late. Jeff put it together for me. He redacted some information out of it, just so that you could understand exactly what it was.
Do we wanna take two-minute recess, just so that we can each individually review it, or are you guys good with it for now?
I'm good.
I just need to read it in.
I'm good.
Do we need to redo it to the record?
Not, not this. You don't have to read it.
Well, no, I was saying, police report.
This is just proof of their advertising.
With the police report?
Yeah. I would.
Okay.
Because you are going to be...
Well, under administrative issues, we're gonna have a discussion regarding the possible revocation of a special permit for 611 North Main Street. With that, Ty, if you would be so kind, we received a police report from the police department with regards to 611 North Main Street.
But before we get into that, I have a question. We need, according to the bylaw, we need to hold a meeting to do this, which is what we have.
This is just a discussion on whether we even wanna go to that meeting.
Okay, that's fine, because we, we obviously...
We can't do a revocation tonight.
...have time to notify the holder.
No, that's not what, you have to vote first whether you wanna hold the meeting to revocation.
I just wanna understand what we're doing, that's all.
Oh, that might be that.
Thank you.
Shall I read this now?
Please.
Okay. "Outer about February 10th, 2016, I Detective Joseph Barone of East Long Metal Police Department initiated investigation of possible sex offenses occurred at the Feng Health Center located at 611 North Main Street. Information received of appropriate sexual touching for a fee was occurring between employees and customers. This location was formerly known as the Korean Massage Therapy. The East Long Metal Police Department has conducted three previous investigations at this location. June 11th, 09, case number 09-1223-OF. February 10th, 2011, case number 11-13-AR, and November 4th, and 11-14-AR, and December 16th, 2011, case number 11-154-AR. These investigations resulted in arrests of criminal complaints for charges of chapter two seventy-two, section fifty-three A, sexual conduct for a fee, and chapter one forty, section fifty-one, unlicensed massage slash baths. One female who was arrested was charged with chapter two seventy-six, section twenty A, fugitive from justice on a court warrant. The females arrested in these cases were of Asian and Korean descent. Also, previous investigations determined employees were living at the business in violation of building codes. The business certificate, forty-one dash two oh one four, issued on May fourteenth, twenty fourteen, from the town of East Long Meadow for Feng Health Center at six eleven North Main Street, was issued to, there's a blank here, Hillside Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass. The investigation determined this person no longer resides at this address. Follow-up check with the Massachusetts Division of Professional Licensing determined issued license number one oh five four for massage therapy in East Long Meadow expired on May twelfth, twenty sixteen. The East Long Meadow Police received a letter via United States Postal Service dated November twenty-sixth, twenty eleven. This letter was a return address noted as Good Samaritan, Oxford, Mass., one oh five four oh, an address to East Long Meadow Police Department, Attention, Human Trafficking Department. The content of this typed letter was altering the police, alerting the police to what the writer believed to be selling sex acts at the Korean Massage Therapy, six eleven North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass., as well as human trafficking issues, building and health codes, laws, tax evasion, et cetera. The writer suggested the police check the website called www.rubmaps.com, which lists the six eleven North Main Street location. I determined this site lists erotic massage parlors in the area, specifically East Long Meadow at Feng Health Center. Phone number is listed here, East Long Meadow, Mass., oh one oh two eight, sixty dollars for a Chinese massage. In March of this year, surveillance was initiated, blank, the blank view captured the entire property of six eleven North Main Street. In viewing, blank, it shows no one arrived when the business opened and neon open sign is turned on. Closing time shows the sign is turned off and no one leaves the building. Propose hours are nine AM to nine PM, as noted on the sign at the front of the door. Dispatch received a call at seven eleven, seven eleven AM for a third-party female who was reportedly a female at six eleven North Main Street, was having some type of problem related to possible heart attack. This address is the Feng Health Center AMR ambulance officer Kavanaugh, and I responded to the business. Upon my arrival, I found no vehicles in the parking lot. We entered the business through the front unlocked door. Two females are present, one female was found in a small room laying on the sides table and in obvious discomfort. Second female was also in the room and speaking on the phone with the external speaker on. She was talking to another female in a foreign language, apparently about the female who was having a medical issue. Paramedic asked what was going on, and the person on the phone spoke English to the paramedic. I spoke with this person and asked for the name and date of birth of the person who was in need of medical attention, that the hospital can have, and when she was transported. She said her name is blank, with the date of birth of blank. I then requested her name, address, and telephone number in case the hospital needed to contact her. She gave her name as blank, from Queens, New York, and her telephone number is blank. Note, when the call was placed to dispatch at a seven eleven AM for medical assistance, the caller provided the, provided her name and telephone number as blank. I noticed then, I then noticed that the rear door of the business was open. I walked down the hallway, determined if anyone else was in the building, and all the doors to the remaining rooms were open. I found no one, but I noticed that appeared people had been living in the building. I noticed a kitchen area with food, and one of the rooms had a bed in it, which I, different from the, which I see is different from a massage table. Blank was transported to Bay State Medical Center in Springfield by ambulance. The other known female stayed at the facility. This too?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I asked Robin to put this on. After reading through the special permit, there are certain criteria which I feel as though hasn't been met, and I would like the board to take a vote to schedule a meeting with regards to the special permit, the revocation of the special permit at six eleven North Main Street.
I would be in favor of that.
As would I.
Absolutely agree with that. Make a motion to do that, to have, to hold the meeting.
And I'll second George's motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
I would just add that a letter go out to, I believe it's Feng Ling Liu, who is the holder of the special permit, notifying her of the time and date of the meeting, so that they could have someone here to represent them.
So you want, what, six fifteen, January third?
Is that enough time for notice? We've got, that's two weeks, that should, fourteen days should be plenty of notice.
Yeah, because holidays are on the weekends.
Yeah, the holidays are the weekends. I mean, it's not a public meeting anymore.
No.
I've been carrying.
This is probably in the bylaw that specifies.
We're not moving dates, holidays are not a notice here.
Right.
Do we want to send a letter to the owners of the building, property, too?
I was going to say all parties possibly.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Very good.
For six fifteen, or how long are you going to take for the bylaw hearing, do you think?
I don't think it's going to take too long.
Thirty, yeah. All right, we'll do six fifteen, and I doubt that anyone is going to show it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, having a motion made and seconded, further discussion was done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It was a unanimous vote. It's after six thirty now, so let's take.
I think that gentleman is here for us to know, Mr. McCarthy?
Are you Mr. McCarthy? Would you like to come up?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna.
Being late, I couldn't find the room.
Oh.
It's kind of tucked away.
Yes, it is.
It's easier if you come in the back way.
Okay.
You come in the front way and you're all the way through.
I'm from both sides. I've never been here.
Okay, this is the request for waiver, site plan review, future Forge, twenty Maplehurst Ave. Ty, do you want to quickly read through, just to give us an update of what it was?
Sure.
Or a description of it?
Okay, so the summary, summary of business operation, design and create with computer, software, and small objects with wood, plastic, et cetera. Home office with no large space or equipment necessary, sales conducted online, small side business, it's a hobby slash hobby, no outside changes or advertising.
So George, I know you had a couple of questions.
Yeah, I assume that this is a 3D printing that you're doing.
Yeah, some of it is, yeah.
Okay, so the issue is whether or not that's manufacturing, because manufacturing is not allowed in a residential zone. Okay, home offices are, but manufacturing is not. And so if you've got your 3D printer there and you're actually manufacturing product, my concern was, not necessarily that this would be negative at the start, but once we give you a waiver, then if you decide that you're going to get a bigger machine or six machines, you know, you're still under waiver for that, for that use. And so I was concerned about how we, whether we should give a waiver, and if we do, how we should word it so that it's kept to the scale that would be appropriate for the area.
Sure.
And again, the issue is manufacturing versus having a home office.
Right, yeah, so I guess one way you could word it is perhaps maybe benchtop printer, so this is a very small thing. Anything beyond that would be, you know, manufacturing, large-scale machines, something I'm definitely not interested in, something I don't have that kind of money for.
Robin, do you need him to state his name and address for the record?
Sure.
I'm sorry, would you state your name and address for the record?
Sure.
Because the tape can't actually see you.
Absolutely, yeah, Brian McCarthy, and I'm living at twenty Maplehurst Ave, East Long Meadow.
So from the sound of it, you said this is more of a hobby?
Yeah.
So you're talking very limited number of pieces? I mean, I'm assuming you create online through the computer, and then the printer prints out? I mean, I'm not familiar with a 3D printer.
Correct.
Neither am I.
I'm very familiar with it. I guess one of the questions I would ask is, are there any hazardous materials being used in printing?
No, I don't believe so. In fact, some of the ones that I'd be interested in would be biocompatible materials. So it shouldn't be an issue.
So are there any solvents or things like that that you'd have in quantity?
Nothing in large quantity, no. It's just household items, isopropyl alcohol.
Okay.
That's about it.
I'm really referring to George more on this because I'm sort of at a loss. I've heard of 3D printing.
Yeah.
I've never seen one be used. I don't know how the system works.
I know it goes everywhere from making toy soldiers to making GE making turbine blades.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and everything in between. And I know it's a great new technology, and it in some ways is no worse than having a laser printer to print paper, okay? But I think the board needs to consider, at what scale does something become manufacturing? And what do we want to allow in a residential area, okay? It's, this is more like to be, from the way it's being explained, a crafter. Which we have allowed, somebody who beads, let's say, and sells things at craft shows or sells them online.
Would there be a way to word it that we would allow his waiver for site plan review?
Yeah.
Pending, nothing more than any, I'm sorry, benchtop? Benchtop.
A single benchtop.
Single benchtop.
3D printer.
3D printer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would there be a way to do that?
I'd be happy to with that.
Okay.
So now, as far as what you're saying, are you mass producing, you know, where you do one toy soldier and you picked up a hundred thousand of them?
No.
And that's, I guess that's really, and I'm not knowing how it works.
Right, no, it takes some time, so I wouldn't have enough time in the world to do mass production.
I know nothing about this. It sounds like if I were to have a little photo developing, took my own pictures in my basement, am I right about that at all, George?
Yeah, this would be similar.
Okay.
Again, it, it goes from unsophisticated to sophisticated. And I know, know what your market is, but, you know, there are people who will do sophisticated designs of small objects, okay? For instance, in medical technology, you might be making very small things, but very precisely for a medical, you might be in gears.
That would be manufacturing, right.
Or something, okay? That could eventually evolve to be manufacturing.
Model building.
Okay.
Prototype.
Prototype, okay.
You know, having a design, copying a prototype, playing with it.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, but.
Not as a toy, but just playing with it.
Even, sure.
Model bike.
You know, I mean, there are, there are people who are doing this who get orders for a hundred thousand gears, half an inch in diameter, you know? Actually, not a hundred thousand, because the scale is, basically, if you're making, what, less than a hundred, it might be more economical to do it this way. You know, with that, you're going to make it die and make it that way because it's cheaper. So, again, I just wanted to understand what your, your purpose was and what your scale was.
Right.
And if you're comfortable with us limiting you to one desktop printer at this time, then if you decide to expand later on, you can back to us, we can talk again, or you may decide that you're going to get real manufacturing space.
Sure, absolutely.
Start making a lot of money out of it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Put my day job.
Well, I'm curious, what kind of things do you think you'll be making with this? Or how to reproduce with this?
Let me show you one?
Sure, that would be awesome.
I got a bunch of things at home I'd love to have more of.
Hundred dollar bills?
He hasn't filled in a whole case of stuff here.
So that's actually wood, there's no 3D printing on there, but I'd be possibly making components for that, but that's just one of the, one of these.
That's just labor.
Correct, yeah.
This is out of my world.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
But stuff on that size, right.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Now, can you, is it, I've done a lot of reading about this stuff. Can you actually do a crescent wrench that actually works?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought.
No way. By printing mine.
It's amazing.
Yeah. Literally, literally.
Where's our labor force going to go?
They're making bridges. So with that, George, would you like to craft a motion for this?
I think I already have a business.
You want to read it back to us?
Don't ask. Sure, that he can have, limited to benchtop, one benchtop printer only. And anything larger than that or more extensive than that, he would have to come back to discuss things with the board.
All right, I'll agree with that, I'll make that motion. We're going to waive our plan with those conditions.
Is there a second on that? Is there any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in and explaining.
Thank you, absolutely.
Whole new technology.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we're a little bit behind, but we have a six thirty appointment. Dr. Coughlin and Kimberly Masuik to discuss height issues.
I saw it, I still don't understand it. Does it say? We're up against it. It does say average. I thought it said. That's what I thought, too. I don't understand it.
Okay.
Are we all set?
At this time, yes, we are, would you please state your name for the record?
Sure, Kimberly Masuik, I'm an engineer with Associated Filters. I have Dr. Coughlin with me, Scott Downey from our office as well. So we were here two weeks ago for Bay State Mental, this office, professional office complex that we were looking at, and I know, we were talking about the site, really, and a little bit about the, the building height and finished floor elevation changes that were coming. And one of the board members mentioned the, the height and asked about the height. And when we looked at that, the, the top of the parapet was thirty-four. But that's only the, the over, can you guys see this?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the overall height, you know, the slope of the site drops. So from the front elevation, it's like this, and looks like a single-story building. You go to the back and you see it's like two-story here. So the, the height requirement is thirty feet, as you had a question and mentioned last time. And basically, in order to, to build this building the most economical way that we can, getting required ceiling heights that are appropriate for when you have two-story offices and everything, and having a parapet on the top to make sure that we screen all the HVAC units, it ends up being thirty-four to the highest point. So it's not all thirty-four, but this, this front part right here is, and then it drops, drops down. So in most other cities and towns, the bylaw reads where you go from the highest point of the roof to the average grade around the land, so you can, yeah, around the building at the exterior wall. So you can see it varies, you know what I mean? It's short up here, bigger, taller in the back. So when you go through that exercise and do that, it is less than thirty feet. It's, it's like twenty-nine and a half. And that's from the highest point of the roof to the average grade around the perimeter of the building, where the, at the foundation wall.
Kim, right at this time, I'm going to stop you for just one second, so that I can read in, under our zoning bylaws, we have a definition for height. It says, in reference to a building, the vertical distance between the highest point of the roof and the average grade of land in which the building is located. So that's our definition for height.
Yeah. So I think that we fall under that. I know there was just a little, you know, I wanted to make sure, I want to clarify it because I don't want to be, you know, we're going through and finalizing this, and I don't want to do it six times, so, you know, we wanted to come in here. And I did, I talked to our land use attorney just to check, because I don't want to be in here presenting something that I can't stand behind. So, and, and his interpretation was just that, and he said that is, you know, pretty typical. And, you know, the building, or interim building inspector said that he would support that as well. So I just wanted to make sure everyone's on the same page before we go any further.
So with the board under that definition, I mean, it would be my assumption that what we would do is take the front side of the building, the height of the land, on the back side, the height, average it, and then from that point.
Exactly, I feel so.
I agree, agree with that a hundred percent, I think, but under that, I think.
These photos we did will give you an idea of what it actually would look like right from street level, so you can kind of get an impression of driving down the road. You did it with a really big 3D printer.
No, it would have the building all.
As you can see, as you can see, the building really fits in well with the adjacent properties.
It's very similar to the reminder, which is, you know, close by, it's just due to the slope, so.
I would be inclined to accept that interpretation. So we have this land, you take the two, and the height in between, and then it would be the distance from that. So does our definition help you at all?
Well, we need it under that, you know, we, well, basically, we took, we went all the way around the whole perimeter and took the exact grades, you know, all the way around here, not just this side and that side, but we.
True average.
We took the true average, we did the whole thing all the way around, and we were twenty-nine, six, or lower. I mean, I was very conservative when we did it, just quickly.
Do you, do you need to vote on this to accept it?
No, because they're redoing the plan, you have to approve the, the site plan. The, the problem was is whether or not you would agree with their interpretation of the height, since it was an issue the last time.
I, I would agree with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very clear under our definition, it says the average grade of land on which the building is located. And so if you went around the entire building, took measurements all the way.
Yeah.
Average it out, I would say that that could classify as the average grade of land.
Okay, that's good. I just, we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page before we finalize everything. And I also wanted to submit the check for the traffic mitigation fee.
Oh, perfect.
And I didn't know, it's, it's just the town of East Long Meadow?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, all right.
So with the board, we don't need to vote on that or anything?
No, I just, we just wanted to come in.
Pretty much in the definition, so.
All right, very good.
I think we're both on the same wavelength page.
So we're gonna, we'll, we'll be working on this and hopefully coming back in, and I'll talk to you about setting up the informal meeting, I know you said that would be, okay, awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Did I hold on to those?
Do you think we can?
Well, this is not mine. I'm running out of time.
I'm sorry, Rob. He's just.
We're getting there.
He's just doing a little.
We want it on quarter scale, right there.
Larry's business is growing. If you're like, George is talking about.
I'm going to. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robin, you don't have any minutes or anything? There's nothing left, I think my chat.
I know it's been something in here.
And I did notice that Donald was doing less than two minutes, and they should be just about done. So with nothing further on my agenda, I would entertain a motion, unless Michael has something.
I do have one point.
Yeah.
First, section six, it was in fact residential C.
Oh, it was.
It was, I looked it up.
Okay.
So that being said, I'm assuming the only pre-existing non-conforming was a sideline issue.
Yeah.
So is there, new part doesn't fall within the setback limitations at all?
Wait a minute, where? It was an, it was an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Correct.
That was the reason for the special.
Right, I just want to clarify that it was residential C, and that meant the only issue they had was setback on the border.
So it's not more non-conforming?
Correct, yeah.
Right, right, right.
That way that somebody can then, you know, okay, that's all.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Actually, there was so- Did you guys already talk about the parking lot to be put in on Baldwin Street?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I, I got stuck with clients at my gym, so I didn't get to hear it.
These people.
Oh, actually, it was approved contingent upon a new site plan showing the storm grades. They were just omitted from the plan. And including in with the maintenance program, who's going to be responsible?
In fact, it's all in Robert Parent's letter.
Yeah, okay. But yes, it was, it was approved. I got held up at my gym, so I didn't get to hear it. Okay, thank you.
I hope this means that you're expanding and doing more business.
More than double the size we currently are.
Wonderful.
Good, that's good to hear.
I'd like to see that.
Yep, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.